I caused the 3:00 PM session of the October 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first business item of consideration today is Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the Items of Consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, A Consideration of a Proclamation Recognizing the Ten-Year Anniversary of the Disability Rights and Resource Center. Dr. Cobbler, I believe that you have a proclamation for the board's consideration today, and following up will introduce members of that group that are here to receive it.
Okay, yes. Let me read it now. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, read it now.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Proclamation Recognizing the Disability Rights and Resource Center Awareness Day. Whereas in 1988, Congress declared the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to recognize the contributions made by individuals with disabilities. And whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, was signed into law on July 26, 1990, establishing a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and ensuring that Americans with disabilities can more easily access local government services, emergency services, voting information, and publicly funded education. And whereas, the ADA opened doors to opportunity and independence for people with disabilities and expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing opportunities for full participation and inclusion in community life. And whereas, the entire West Piedmont Planning District is committed to working in partnership with disability organizations to ensure public places, transportation, and systems of care are accessible to individuals with disabilities. And whereas, the importance of inclusion and diversity creates opportunity for growth and improvement and helps toward building a stronger economy for our communities. And whereas, our residents with disabilities deserve the right to live independently, enjoy self-determination, and be treated equally. And whereas, we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Disability Rights and Resource Center providing advocacy, peer support, information, and referral, independent living skills, and transition services in our community to the many individuals living with a disability in the county of Henry. Now, therefore, it proclaims that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes November the 12th, 2024, as a Disability Rights and Resource Awareness Day, signed Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. And then we invite, we do have Ms. Carol Tuning, who's the Executive Director of Disability Rights and Resource Center, and Scott Giebert, who is also on the Board of Directors, and he works, your title, Scott, is?
Disability Resource Councilman.
For Patrick and Henry Community College. So we'll go down and have a picture and then get them to speak.
I'll accept the motions first.
Okay, so I make a motion for, to accept the proclamation for the Disability Rights and Resource Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. I'm going to ask if Supervisor Dillard and Vice Chairman Bryant will join Dr. Cobbler in presenting this. And again, thank you all for being here today.
Scott, if you want to join in, I can take a picture for you.
Okay.[313.12][313.12](laughter)
(inaudible).
Miss Tuning, if you would like to offer any comments, please do so at this time.
Yeah, I would like to talk for just a moment. I do see that you have a full agenda, so I don't want to take up a lot of your time. But I would like to share with the board a little bit of the work that we do. As you all know, we have been around, like I said, for 10 years, serving the West Piedmont Planning District. I'm grateful to have one of my Board of Directors here with me today as well. He's very well-known throughout the community. I am deeply grateful for the work that Dr. Cobbler brings to our organization. She works with us part-time, and I always let her know that as many hours as she's willing to give me, I'm willing to take it, but I do realize that she has a lot of demands. So just to tell you a little bit about the Disability Rights and Resource Center, we are one of 17 centers across the state of Virginia. We do receive our funds through the federal, from the federal government, through the State Department of Medical Assistance Services. So in saying that, we are a consumer-driven organization, which means that 51% of our Board of Directors, as well as our staff, are individuals with disabilities. We work very hard to ensure that any individual with any disability can live a life of independence. And in saying that, that's our mission, of course, but in saying that, there are five core services that we offer, including advocacy, peer support, independent living skills, information and referral, and transition services. We believe in advocating for those, whether it's going to the voting polls, or advocating for a parking place in front of a restaurant, or a grocery store, or assisting them in getting their disability claim filed. Whatever the need is, if they call our agency, we're there to assist. I failed to mention that we have an office in Rocky Mount, one in Martinsville, and also one in Danville, so that we serve the entire planning area, including Franklin, Martinsville, Henry County, Pennsylvania County, Danville. Okay? I think I got all of those. So we go a long way down in the country. When it's time to do supervision, it's an all-day job. So let me tell you, we have a large service area. But we also have a lot of accomplishments over the last 10 years. I've been in the position for five years, so in the last 10 years, we've done great work throughout our service area. Just this year alone, we've assisted 286 individuals. And 179 of those were 65 years and older, so we do have an aging population that's out here. We do a lot of home modifications because we want people to age gracefully in their home. We don't want them to have to go into a nursing home or move in with family and friends. We want them to be able to live where they are. We do a lot of transition work for our students in school. Scott sits on a transition board. They go to the C Act meetings, the transition meetings, whether they're transitioning from school to high school, or from, I'm sorry, from school to college, or from high school to employment. We're there to assist them with that transition work. And last year, we provided more than 5,000 hours of community service work to those individuals. So I'm grateful, again, for the opportunity. We do have a 10-year anniversary coming up. I know you all have gotten the invitation, and I do hope to see some of your faces there other than Pam.[585.29][585.29](laughter) So I do hope to see you all there, and I'm sure Pam and I will be following up with you on that invite. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have as well, or Scott, if you'd like to add something.
You're doing great, Jennifer.[600.16][600.16](laughter) That's why you're our Deputy Director.
Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Tuning? Thank you so much again for being here today.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Seven, we'll get a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us Deputy Treasurer Tiffany Harrison at this time. Thank you, Tiffany, for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Personal property collections. As of September 30th, 2024, we collected 91.04% of 2023 personal property taxes. We collected $61,075.25 in the month. For real estate, as of September 30th, 2024, we collected 95.14% of the 2023 real estate taxes. We collected $109,283, excuse me, and 26 cents in the month. Since January 2024, TACS has collected $680,736.42. For debts, we collected $2,922.09 on October 20, excuse me, October 16. The total for 2024 is $395,162.48. As far as our DMV subs, we collected eight for September and so far, eight for October. Thank you.
Okay. She's looking at me like, please don't ask them to ask me any questions. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
I do have a question, but it's more so for Mr. Wagner, and just something that just popped into my head. I know that, you know, we have a certain amount of taxes that we anticipate collecting each year. When we budget, what percent of taxes that we are scheduled to collect do we include in our budget? Because I know we never collect 100%, so what percent of that do we use to determine our budget?
Thank you for that question. I'm going to defer to Finance Director, Darryl Phillips.
Okay. Because my other question would be, if we collect more than we anticipated, what do we do with that extra money that we were not anticipating collecting?
We budget to collect 95%.
Okay.
And if it's more than that, it rolls into the general fund coffers at the end of fiscal year, just like any other revenue line item or expenditure item. What we over-understand, at the end of the day, all of it rolls into either an increase in fund balance or a reduction in fund balance, depending on which way all of those pieces all add.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for being here today. At this time, Agenda Item Number Eight, we'll have an update from Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Keith. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're with the board. We have a brief report from activities in September this year. In our business development, there will be, Valley Harley has a bidding on site contracts scheduled for November 6th and 7th, and this will really focus on benefits of getting swans certified and re-certified as a rate program, and as well, will be well-attended. You can also see the list of office and site visits that Valley has had in the month of September. The, you have in your packet, Mark, the unemployment report, rather, for the month of July, jumped up a little bit this year, as you can see, about a half a point over this same time last year. We think a lot of this is due to students returning to college. We kind of see a bump in that every year, but still way below what it had been in the past. You will see that we've conducted several prospect visits. The, say the name, they're all kind of strange names, but there has been a lot of increased activity. We'll talk more about that in our closed session. Mr. Wagner, myself, and others attended a meeting with the Commonwealth Transportation Board at CCAD. It was a pretty quick meeting. We had a lot, we covered a lot of ground, but it was good to have the transportation board in Henry County, particularly at CCAD and at Commonwealth Crossing, so that we could talk about the increased traffic there and the need we have for transportation upgrades. Hopefully, down the road, that will pay off. We received word that Track Two at Commonwealth Crossing is in the award of Platinum designation from the Site Selectors Guild. Platinum is the highest designation, and we believe our site was rated number one out of all those submitted in the U.S. We have submitted our final report to the EDP for the original site's rated program with a million 36,000, and so that will be closed out soon. We continue to work with the county to build upgrades. We did have a visit September 30th from the EDP's Real Estate Solutions Scene. They had a chance to have them on the ground here, looking at our site facilities, which is really good there, the group responsible for recommending sites and prospects. In the tourism division, we've been saw, I can have folk distribution locally. There were 620 guys distributed. We also sent guys to the Harrison Business Center. Our website design is well underway. We completed the new visit Martinsville website. We're now working on the D S Martinsville, which is our economic development website, and updating that. The eBlast went to 17 subscribers, and the Portland Newsletter went to 250. In our workforce development division, the marketing and design, the 25 state visitor guide will have a fan focused on recreation, not the recreation of Martin County. We're actively running social media for our streaming platforms, already missing a website redesign, and Sarah Ives has been involved in a lot of these things, particularly in the trail campaign, planning meetings focusing on Henry County and planning for the upcoming We Are Manufacturing promotional, whatever initiative we're going to have that's going to come, to which we'll be highlighting manufacturing jobs in Martin Henry County in an effort to help increase folks wanting to work here. Now, I think we're going to, Randy's going to see, Pat and I have seen some very good drama footage that's been taken at Commonwealth Crossing, we've been working on it. So as you can see, there's a lot of activity going on, there's really a V I of activity out there. Hanes Brothers is doing a great job, and I think I can speak to the pace that we couldn't be more pleased with the job they're doing. Representative County Project is grading on schedule, a little bit of a setback from the rain that we had, but not nearly as much, obviously, as you could have in some other places. Very few wall stains completely, grading, and our clearing continues as the site progresses. Just really interesting, there's some elevation changes, cut and fill of over 60 feet in some areas, which really quite interests a lot of blasting going on. Still blasting, two or three times a week. Out of the 3 million yards, we'll be moving a million yards of that will be rock. So it's a pretty substantial grading. But we're very pleased what's going on. You saw the Press Glass, a picture of the Press Glass, their expansion is moving along very well, and a lot of projects we've made lately, so we're excited about all that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mark at this time?
Just to note a discussion, I was meeting with the group yesterday, and this group was still asking me, they're asking a lot of questions now that the comprehensive plan is being written. They're asking about the budget and different things that we have discussed already. So I would just like to ask you to reiterate that, or your opinion, that you feel like Henry County is in an excellent place economically, and I think I've asked you before, if you continue, our word would be, hope that we will continue to move forward in the most positive way. Your, not that you can guarantee anything, but your confidence level for the economy of Henry County?
Sure. Without violating comments, we think that we're very excited about the future. We think it's going to be strong, just as we have been enjoying some success on things that happened over the last 15 years, that we continue going forward with this site. We're seeing, we'll see some increased activity, we're confident of that. Our show building activity has really jumped up since the end of August, as people run back to school, when we've had a real, now, having prospects visit is one thing, having them to do a deal is another, but we go through a lot of no's to get a yes, but we're having the opportunity to get in front of a lot of people. The last two months have, it's been some of the most robust prospect activity and visitation that we've had in the last year and a half or so. So the future, we believe, looks very good.
Okay, very good. And a couple other things, our average manufacturing wage is hourly wage?
Well, I can't, I have to check, I can't think, but I can tell since in the last 10 years, that manufacturing wages have increased almost 80%, probably 78.4, I think, in Henry County. So wages are going up. It's somewhere in the range of $25 to $28, but I'll have to verify that.
Okay. Looking at the unemployment rates, but also, and I don't know if you would have the answer to this, but I keep, well, I say I keep getting, often people talk to me about individuals in Henry County that are at or below the poverty level. Do you have any, do we have any information on that? I know I can find it, but I just didn't know if you would have anything about the average, the average income or of the individual.
(inaudible) in the 40s. This is, I can't answer that question.
Okay. Because I was thinking it was between 35 and 40, but I just thought while you're here, I could ask, I wasn't sure if you would have that information, but I was asked that yesterday. I know it's on the websites, and there's a lot of stuff on EDC website, and a lot of stuff on the Henry County website about that, but these are the types of questions that I'm being asked, or the types of discussions that I'm starting to have as the, all of these, these subjects are coming up. So thank you.
I've got a couple of things we want to work on the podium. One reason we require, we try to recruit higher-paid employers, is to raise that average wage in our community. So, you know, with companies like Press Glass and Crown are paying well above the average, so that lifts the whole community up on average. Secondly, the Patrick and Henry Community College does a heavy equipment operators course, and Hanes Grant, who is doing the grading at Commonwealth Crossing, visited the class and hired every single student in the class to work on this project. So that's good educational opportunities in our community, leading to careers right here in our community. And then the thing that I don't want to get passed over too lightly in your report is, if I heard you correctly, you said the Site Selectors Guild, which is the renowned site selector group in America, said we had a platinum rating on our site, and it was the best one in the country.
Well, we are platinum, and that's the highest, and we think, based on the score, when this was done on a preliminary basis last year, we, our score was seven and a half, something like it, it was the top out of all of the pilot programs. Our site actually rated higher, it was over eight, it was eight points something this time, and we think that's due to the grading actually starting. So we, we're trying to verify, we assume that we're still number one out of all of those that were submitted, but it's a great designation. The Site Selectors Guild are the folks that we work the hardest with, Mark the most to. That's how we got Crown, that's how we got some other projects. And it takes years of those relationships, but it's worth the effort. As you were talking about our back in price in the closed session, probably half of those are coming from consultants that we know through that guild relationship.
I didn't want that to be passed over.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, we'll take up financial matters, beginning with Nine A, An Additional Appropriations Referring to Traffic Enforcement Grant for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner?
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $26,800 received from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles grant for traffic enforcement. The grant is to pass through funding received from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for fiscal year 2025. The grant will be used for overtime for deputies performing extra traffic enforcement and travel expenses related to grant administration training. And there's representative from the Sheriff's Office, should you have any questions.
Great. Board, it's an opportunity to review the background material on this as well. What action do you desire to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $26,800 received from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles grant. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Nine B, An Additional Appropriation Referring to Bulletproof Vest Program for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner?
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to appropriate a grant of $22,144 received from the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program. The grant will provide protective vests for law enforcement personnel. And the grant does require 50% match, but we budget for that in the operating budget.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the additional appropriation of $22,144 received from the Department of Justice for the purchase of the bulletproof vests.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number 10, Designation of Voting Representatives for the 2024 Virginia Association of Counties, known as VACO Annual Business Meeting. Mr. Wagner?
2024 Virginia Association of Counties Annual Business Meeting, scheduled for November 12th of 2024. Each county is asked to designate a member of its elected board and an alternate to vote on the county's behalf on any issues that may arise during the business meeting. It's my understanding that Mr. Bryant, Mr. Dillard, Dr. Cobbler, and myself are scheduled to attend.
Okay. With that, amongst those, rather than it coming from those that are not attending, those that are attending, is there a desire that you all have?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Dr. Cobbler as the voter representative for Henry County.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Dr. Cobbler seems to be overwhelmed that she was just drafted into something. Any discussion? You have an opportunity for discussion.
No, it's perfectly fine. I plan to be there. We'd be honored to represent Henry County.
Thank you, madam.
The voting representative.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All in favor?
I'm voting for myself.
It's five with one absent.
(inaudible).
Alternate.
Make a motion that we appoint your Dillard as an alternate.[1795.44][1795.44](laughter)
Second.
Okay, we have a Okay, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Dillard to be the alternate. Any discussion? It's a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent in regard to that action. Thank you all for willing to participate in this meeting. It's usually a lot of information in the course.
That's what happened to me about four times.
Agenda item number 11, we'll take up informational items, beginning with comments from the board, starting with Dr. Cobbler.
I have a real quick comment. I want to thank Mr. Wagner for following up on the road over here where the Dollar General is being built. And we have had some discussion about that. I've had a lot of calls about the dirt and rocks and things on the road. And it took us a minute to look into that, but you have steadily looked into that. So I just wanted to publicly thank you because, again, very public road, a lot of traffic. I was getting a lot of calls about it. And so thank you. I just want to thank you for really taking care of that.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, and I normally try to think my thoughts through before I speak, but just want to, you know, we have an election coming up. And I think everybody knows that it's a fairly tense election for various reasons. And I think it's our responsibility, you know, Sheriff's Department, us as leaders of Henry County, to make sure that Henry County, you know, as my mom would say, you know, we act dignified in whatever comes out of this election. And I think regardless of what comes out of, there are going to be people all over the place. And I think we have to make sure we put things in place. You know, I worked in Greensboro years ago and we had an election and, you know, there were teachers who wouldn't follow guidelines because of, you know, winners and losers of elections. And, you know, there were parents opting out of certain events because certain people won or lost. And I think it's important that we set that standard and, you know, whether that's messages that we send out, conversations that we have, because, you know, we can all go back and forth about, you know, the different policies and procedures that, you know, the executive of our country is going to put in place. But we've all lived long enough that no president has done anything that has taken that 10 cent in my bank account and made it $20,000. Things do change. Things do get different, but they don't get drastically different. A lot of it still depends on how hard we work, what we do, how we treat each other, which is most important. And that's what we need to emphasize with our folk in Henry County is that we treat each other well and we can't let something that happens, you know, in Washington, D.C. that, you know, affect us and our neighbors and our school systems and our jobs. And just would like to encourage us to take the lead on that and whatever that means for each one of us prior to the election and even afterwards, that we take the lead on making sure that we continue to treat each other fairly, treat each other well and not something that's going to happen again in four years, cause Henry County to, you know, get into a bad space and a bad place.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCann?
I don't. I'm sure Dale will remind us about the races coming up.
I do.
All right, Ms. Bryant?
The only thing, I just kind of echo what Mr. Dillard said. Of course, we do know we got an election coming up next month. My suggestion is would be for everybody to get out and vote regardless what party you vote for. It's your constitutional right to vote. Men and women die for you to vote. The least thing you can do is get out and vote regardless of the party.
Thank you. I don't have any take. Mr. Wagner?
Just a few date reminders to begin with. We are excited to have fans and visitors and NASCAR folks in town starting this week for a new event at Marlin Speedway this Saturday, October 26th. Our community will welcome for the first time ever the IMSA Mazda MX-5 race cars. It'll be the first time that they have ever raced on an oval track. So that's exciting. That race has been paired with the NASCAR Modified Tour, which attracts a lot of people to our community. So if you're able to get out to that this Saturday, October 26th. And then we continue into the next week with racing as well. Friday evening, November 1st, the NASCAR trucks will be in town. Saturday, November 2nd is the Xfinity Series cars. And then Sunday afternoon on November 3rd, we'll welcome the NASCAR Cup Series. And it's the next to the last race and the championship crowning. So this race is very important in deciding who makes it to the final cut. Should be a big event. And you may recall last year, if I remember, it was a sold out race, the last, or last Couple of you mentioned already, but Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, and that is a state-county holiday. But that's mainly that our buildings are, will be closed to the public, but we're, many of our employees work on that day. The election office is extremely busy and then other employees support that operations, you know, working at polling stations and counting votes and responding to inquiries and providing safety and security to those sites. Keep that in mind if you attempt to do business with Henry County on Tuesday. And then Veterans Day is Monday, November 11th, and all of our county offices and PSA offices will also be closed. But as a reminder, it's also our community's Veterans Day service where we honor the men and women who have served our country. It is at 11:00 a.m. at the historic John D. Bassett Event Center in Bassett. And we also will present the annual community military veterans award at that time. Saw that.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, we talked about the election a lot. 7,100 of our fellow citizens have already voted. Voting is available right now, almost 20% of our, we were briefed by the registrar this morning, almost 20% of the registered voters of Henry County have already cast their vote.
And if I may add one more thing when I close, talking about veterans, is one of our employees, Doug White, is a deputy with the Henry County Sheriff's Office, was deployed to act of duty on October 9th into the Middle East. So, you know, we're proud we have men and women that serve our country. They're still part of our workforce and he's going to be away from us for quite some time, I think. So if you would keep him in your thoughts and prayers going forward. And we're very proud of him and the service he gives to our community and our country.
Mr. Chairman, and I would ask that Brandon, our public information officer, would just email the employees here in Henry County and remind them about the 11th of November. And I know that is important to a lot of them and hopefully they will attend.
Great, thank you. That takes us to agenda item number 12, closed meeting. You have at your, in front of you, a written copy versus the electronic copy because there is an addition of what we need to cite of the items allowing us to go into closed meeting. If someone would make that motion as what is allowed under the Freedom of Information Act.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board go into closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discuss, discussion of appointees to the Henry Martinsville Social Services Board, the Anchor Commission, and Ninth District Development Financing. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate. 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries. And 2.23711A10 for discussion of awards and recognition. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer, I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Out of closed meeting, no motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Ms. McCann. Mr. Powell, will you call forward?
Yes, sir. Four members of the best of your knowledge on public business matters law exempted. Most of the meeting requirements under code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711 were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCann?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. McCann, I believe that you have a countywide appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The board wishes to appoint Richard Walker to the Henry Martinsville Social Services Board for an unexpired term ending May 31st, 2026.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second. If we have a second, any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a performance agreement for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the performance agreements with Ridgeway Halifax LLC as regards to the renovation of apartments at 74, 76, and 78 Halifax Drive, Collinsville, and to appropriate $75,000 from the general fund balance for the payment of a milestone as outlined in this performance agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Is there, did we also have a motion in regard to deed?
Yes, I think Deborah had.
What?
Deed, deed of property.
Oh, no, that was mine too. I gotta find it.
Right here.
All right, there we go. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a motion to approve the deed, transfer, and ownership of the property that is part of the Villa height housing projects to the West Piedmont Plan and District Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Mr. Wagner, are there any other items that we need to consider prior to a recess?
No.
Board members, do you have any? If not, we will stand in recess and begin promptly at 6:00 p.m. for our evening session. We call the 6:00 p.m. session of the October 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from earlier this afternoon. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item matters presented by the public that we will take up as agenda item number 15 in tonight's meeting. Again, welcome everyone. Our first item of business as far as the agenda is agenda item 13, general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from BDOT.
Good evening. Kind of just, just bring you up to date of several, on several projects that are in various stages. Of course, you know, we've got Lovers Leap. I know it's in Patrick County, but I'm sure it's of interest to some of you. But it's on schedule to be completed in 2026. And we hope to have the next section that goes through FESTA ready to start in 2026. So we're working on that design build contract now. The 220 corridor improvements that I've spoken to you before, various intersections through Henry, Franklin, and Rodeo Counties, those bids were, the project was advertised earlier, but the bids rejected. It was pulled off, re-advertised, and we expect those bids to be open tomorrow. The intersection that applies to us in Henry County is there at the Dodge Store and McDonald's and Bojangles across the street. What we'll be doing is what's called a through cut. We won't be allowing intersections or intersecting streets or intersecting traffic to cross all the way across. You'll have to turn right or left into. So minor improvement, but the benefit, hopefully improve traffic flow. We have another project, pedestrian improvements on Virginia Avenue and Daniels Creek Road. I've mentioned that a few times. That's a $1.1 million project and the bids on that project will be open tomorrow. And of course, we have the Smart Scale project on Dogwood Drive, Lower Park, and that's a $3.1 million project. And its construction is expected to start in early 2026. And just the last thing, you know, you all made applications to Smart Scale back in the fall for three projects, the Green Tea at 87220, the Roundabout in Ranely, and Bear's Mill Road improvements. And those scores will be released in January. And that's all I have.
Lisa, excuse me, with that, that one on Daniels Creek Road, give me a little bit of information on that.
Yes, it's, it's sidewalk improvements just there at the intersection and ADA accommodations that are not, non-existent now. But it's a safety project. It's a safety project for that. Short sections of the sidewalk on both approaches to Daniels Creek.
Okay. Thank you.
Any of the rest of you have items from Ms. Hughes?
Could you have a question? For the sidewalks in Bassett, and this is how twice I've been asked by GBAC, who owns the sidewalks in Bassett? And I knew I would see you today, so I thought I would just ask that. For the record, who owns the sidewalks in Bassett and who's responsible for the maintenance of those?
I'd have to look at the specific location. Sometimes the sidewalks go on and off the right of way. As a rule, if it's on the right of way, BDOT would maintain it.
And if someone, if someone needs to get in touch with you or has a question, should they ask me? Is that the most appropriate channel for information or can they call your office directly?
Sure, then give me. Yes, yes, ma'am. Give me a call anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items? Thank you for, I know you're continuing to do mowing and finally catching up on some of that. It's slowing down some, but I do appreciate the mowing operation and some of the paving operations that's going on up in our area.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14, we'll have a public hearing on rezoning application, R-24-11. Anna Carter, we have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located on the south side of Maple Ridge Road, approximately a tenth of a mile east of Stones Dairy Road in the Blackberry District. Property shown on tax number 25122 as lots 11 and 12. The applicant wished for the rezoning of two lots from suburban residential district to rural residential district. And the applicant wishes to allow for potential placement of manufactured housing and to market the property for sale. Following a public hearing, the planning commission and staff recommend the rezoning request be approved.
We'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:05 p.m. Is there anyone desiring to comment during this public hearing on this rezoning application? Anyone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:05. This is in my district. It's not unlike rezoning that we did just a few months ago in the same general area. And if someone will make a motion on my behalf, I would appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'm making a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number 15, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone desiring to address the board tonight under matters presented by the public? Anyone wishing to address the board tonight? I see one hand. Let me read a brief policy statement. This is your time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, the staff, and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation between three to five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is David Craig and I'm in the Blackberry District. And what I'm bringing forth is concerns about the opioid settlement, abandonment, funding dispersment. And this is originally I'd addressed Honorable Delegate Phillips because I thought at the time that he was my representative for the district. But I've been informed that since my address that Ren, Mr. Ren Williams is the actual representative. But what I had together is, this letter had two sections that I think some of the funding should be distributed to. Now, my understanding, the opioid settlement is at like $52 billion now. And so what I had was number one is I think some of the funding should be distributed to the local community colleges as part of the remediation. Education is crucial in remediation by not only bringing awareness of the dangers of opioid use, but also in training for those providing treatment. The nursing programs train nurses to recognize signs of addiction and overdoses and to properly administer treatment and medication. The physical therapy programs train therapists in the rehabilitation of someone who's have been addicted to opioids and for someone that has suffered from overdoses that cause physical and/or mental disabilities. Education in any program from healthcare, early childhood development, and business administration to engineering tech- administration to engineering technology, agriculture, and liberal arts will provide career pathways, opportunities, and hope for those that feel they have no future. By doing this, we can create a better future for our children, students, communities, and our nation. And part two of it is, I think there should be an allotment for the cleanup and restoration of communities devastated by opioid addictions. My dad's house, Master Sergeant Carl Brown Craig, U.S. Air Force retired, was robbed and burned down December the 17th, 2018 because of the ongoing opioid use and addiction in the neighborhood. He died, he died May 10th, 2020, still having nightmares of his house burning down. The house and both vehicles were total loss, he had no insurance. There have been multiple overdoses with, with one being fatal next door to his house. My dad and I have lost over two hundred thousand dollars in damages and theft. This also affects property values, decreasing the tax base. It also deters future economic developments when potential companies look at the area and its labor pool. But by providing cleaner and safer neighborhoods, this will be help discourage opioid drug use and encourage social and economic well-being and quality of life of the local community, the region, and our nation. And also I had a link to the BTW 21 news report that they done, done the coverage on my dad's house when it burned down. And also I have a excerpt from a CBS News report dated March the 1st, 2023. Christine Mahini, attorney by training and co-founder of Opioid Settlement Tracker.com, has compiled data in the settlement tracker, the amount of money allocated and where states have decided to spend it. According to her data, which is used by state governments in the centers of disease control and prevention, the total pot of funds available from the settlement has reached around fifty four billion dollars, with nearly half of the money coming from a twenty six billion dollar 2022 settlement with drug manufacturers and distributors, and more funds expected from ongoing legal battles. States are required to spend eighty five percent of their settlement funds on opioid remediation, with seventy percent of that allocated to future remediation. Mahini says to prevent and repeat the 1998 debacle settlement controversy, when just three percent of billions of dollars were used to, for treatment and cessation of smoking. Remediation can include funding, harm reduction, treatment options, and more. States have wide discretion on how they choose to spend the money. And thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to address the board under matters presented by the public? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, if, do you have any other business for the board's consideration, Mr. Wagner? Board members, do you have any?
I just want to say one thing, I appreciate Mr. Craig, and I echo your comments that we need to make sure that abatement, opioid abatement funds are used to better our community. You know, I think we're in a very difficult place, and these funds will be coming through just at one time. And if we use them properly, we can make some good decisions moving forward, we can help a lot of people out. And I really think getting our citizens involved in this conversation, I think businesses and organizations, when they get involved, of course, it is about the people, but they're also looking at how they can fund positions and how they can, you know, get resources for themselves. But, you know, citizens will bring a different thought process to that conversation. So I think it would be great to get out with citizens in a conversation as we use these abatement, opioid abatement funds to better our community.
Any other items that we need to consider, board members? I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Everyone have a good evening.